Just letting everybody know, we are live on my end and good to start when you are.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of the North Liberty Planning and Zoning Commission to order, what is today, Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, roll call.
Ahorn.
Here.
Bathke.
Here.
Eo.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
Pentecost.
Here.
Staber.
Here.
Heisler.
Here.
Great. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Patrick, second by Kylie, all in favors.
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Okay. Agenda item number three, request to approve preliminary plat on Cherry Street. Staff presentation, Ryan.
Okay, so this is a preliminary plat for two lot subdivision. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Properties located at the southeast corner of Cherry Street and George Street. There's a house and a detached garage in the western portion of the lot. Current zoning is RSA. It's a single unit residence district. The comprehensive plan designation for this area is commercial. Interestingly enough, the RSA would not be consistent with the commercial land use designation. Really, what we're going to be doing is kind of reexamining from a land use standpoint, this Cherry Street corridor. There's not really any, anything in the comprehensive plan toolbox that I think addresses what this corridor is, which is mixture of uses civic, institutional, mixed uses and things like that. So that's something we're going to be looking at. But really, what we're looking at a subdivision flat, we're looking is, is the subdivision consistent with the current zoning, and it is. Fantastic name for a subdivision, Cliffs Jumping Sheep. So this shows the lot subdivision, it would be down the middle, and then you'd have the ability to build a residence on lot two. You can see the detached garage is non-conforming by setback already. And this property subdivision would not make that any more non-conforming, so it would be permissible. So we did have one finding, it's consistent with the preliminary plat conditions set forth in the Code of Ordinances. And so staff recommends the planning commission accept the listed finding and forward the request to approve the preliminary plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval, and I have a suggested motion down there. And I'll leave my screen up if you want to go back to anything.
Excellent. Thank you, Ryan. Is there an applicant's presentation?
I'm not sure. I see him on the call. But I have been speaking with the the surveyor and, and I'm not sure there's very much to add. It's just a pretty straightforward request and subdivision to allow another residence to be built there. No, no infrastructure improvements or anything like that.
Okay. Were there any, I saw that there weren't any public comments in the packet. Were there any added?
No, we have not received any.
Okay. What questions and comments does the commission have?
Ryan, if another residence is built there on lot two, is that going to be an alley load garage situation?
That's a good question. You know, I don't, we don't really have design standards that force an alley load, so.
Okay, so they could.
Something we're going to have.
Okay, so they could theoretically have a driveway on Cherry Street there.
Yeah, in theory, you know, a lot of times, in a more traditional area of the city, which this is, you'd want something that's kind of compatible with surrounding residences and kind of having a front loaded garage would not be, in my opinion, but I don't know that we have the tools and zoning ordinance to compel that.
Okay.
Any other questions and comments?
The only other question I had was about the future land use map showing commercial here. Is there something in the works to reexamine the commercial, the amount of, you know, space reserved for commercial in the future? Or anything here that, you know, needs to be done by the commission?
Well, no action formally. I think we would come back to you with, with some kind of amendment to the future land use plat, the map that kind of has us take a closer look at this area. I can tell you that this is more consistent with an older, older way of doing comprehensive plans where you paint a red line on both sides of a road and, you know, hope to entice commercial to expand your tax base. But that's not really the, the preference that I would have, because sometimes what happens is you'll have a house that gets converted to a smaller commercial use, and that, that might not be the type of commercial use that you want to entice there. So I think it, and it may be a whole new land use category, but we did have some branding that had been done with De novo and Chi Pattery, and really kind of looked at this Cherry Street as being an important corridor in our city and different in scale than obviously a Penn Street or Ranshaw Way, and so the character of development here is much smaller, and so you'd want to encourage any redevelopment, whether it be, you know, multifamily, smaller in scale and compatible with kind of the surrounding home site. So, you know, one to two story tops, kind of smaller in scale and not really overbearing. So I think, I think we need to take a closer look at it and then come back to you in city council with something more formal as a separate action.
Any other questions and comments?
Ryan, do you know then, is that their intended use for that second lot is to build another house there?
Well, yeah, I mean, you're really limited on the amount of what you can do with the RSA zoning, so it's a, it's a single use dwelling district. You can get into other uses such as places of worship and things like that. But you have much larger setbacks, so it really makes it unfeasible.
Okay.
Okay. Last call for questions or comments? All right. May I have a motion for a recommendation to city council?
I'll move. And I'll use the suggestion motion of, I moved that the planning commission accept the listed condition and forward the preliminary plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second. Bathke is second. All right. Motion by Jason, second by Josie, or I guess I should use your last names as well. Motion by Hustler. Am I saying that right, Jason? Hustler? Heisler. Sorry about that. This is good for all of us anyways. Motion by Heisler, second by Bathke. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Staber.
Aye.
Pentecost.
Aye.
Marx. Aye.
Eo.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Ahorn.
Aye.
Right, motion passes. Jessica, I almost said it again. My maiden name gets me every time when she says Marx. I think you're talking to me. Okay, agenda item number four, I believe. Sorry, I lost my agenda here. Request from Casey's Marketing Company to approve a site plan on Westwood Drive and Sugar Creek. Staff presentation, Ryan?
Hey. Okay, so this is for, as mentioned, Casey, so this is redevelopment of the Liberty Motors and Moxie Solar on Ranshaw Way, across from the fairway. Here's an aerial photograph showing the two lots. Access for Moxie on Sugar Creek and access for the Liberty Motors on Westwood. A mixture of zoning in this area, they're currently zoned C1B. That does permit convenience stores with the gas pumps. That's listed as a permitted use. A long range plan for our comprehensive plan is commercial with residential. So we would view this as a, as a consistent with comprehensive plan. I'm not going to take you through all the diagrams and I'll spare you the deep, the over detail that's in the staff report. But, you know, we've been working with Casey's over the past month to make sure that their site plan was consistent with all of our ordinances. So this is a picture of the landscape plan that shows the location of the building. It's about a 4,500 square foot building. 12 fueling stations, you have parking along the front here, access lines up with fairway. Access in the rear, you do have some multifamily residential to the north, so that's heavily landscaped. We get a little tight with respect to retention. You know, these current sites don't have any stormwater retention, and so this redevelopment would. So you have an area along the front here along Ranshaw and an area in the back here. Here's kind of a in view rendering with the landscaping of how it would look. You know, we really worked hard and we appreciate Casey's kind of working with us, you know, we we're in design right now for the next phase of Ranshaw Way, so that's going to be a little, a little under $10 million in improvements. So we're really putting a lot of money in a high quality design into Ranshaw Way, and so you know, we did ask them to provide some additional building detail and they responded. This, this south elevation here was really blank with one door, so they did put some windows in here. There's a cooler back here, I believe, or bathroom, so it's, it's kind of a faux window, but it does add architectural interest. The use of multicolored brick in locations that kind of make those corners pop and give it architectural relief, and so virtually all brick on the exterior except for the gable end, which is a Harry shingle. So really kind of building design exceeds what, what's in the zoning ordinance design standards. Here's the back facing Sugar Creek. Property has three frontages, so you're going to have some portion that doesn't have windows or anything like that. This is the north elevation. They have some screening for the rooftop equipment here. Here's kind of the canopy island and their sign, kind of brick continues with their canopy is along the canopy supports as well as the base of the sign, so really ties all of this brick and especially around the Ranshaw Way, we have a lot of masonry. And so it kind of reinforces that design standard that we've been working hard for over, over, over several years. So we did have a couple findings. Commercial use would be consistent with comprehensive plan. And the site plan would achieve consistency with North Liberty Code of Ordinances, site plans, design standards, and another code of ordinances. We did have one small issue that can be corrected without much, much problem. The lighting on the west exceeded the maximum, not a very big deal. They just need to provide a cutoff for that. So we did have that as a condition. Prior, there is a portion of the sidewalk that has to go around and obstruction, so it goes on the portion of their property, so we're asking for a sidewalk easement. And there's a plot of survey which we need before certificate of occupancy that they formally join those two lots together, so with those two findings and that recommendation, staff does recommend approval.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there an applicant's presentation?
Yeah, good evening, honorable chair members of the commission. My name is Wally Pelz with Pelz Design Services. I really don't have a presentation. Ryan did most of the hard lifting for us this evening. You've been able to hopefully review our design packet. We believe we've come into compliance with everything. We feel that to the north, this definitely gives a better buffer than what we had there previously with the existing building very close to that property line. Excited to be a part of that new corner where you kind of see the pink and the purple, which is a part of that improvement corridor. And we're planning for that ahead as well. I'm mostly here to answer any questions you might have or anything specifically you want me to talk about. But other than that, I believe that Ryan has covered everything that I would have done, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pelz. Ryan, were there any other public comments added?
No, there were not.
Okay. Questions and comments from the commission?
This is Josie Bathke. So my question, I want to go back to the construction, the improvement on Ranshaw Way. Ryan, when we were talking about that, are you talking about the extension to make it four lanes all the way down to? Okay, and that's this coming year, 2021? And so this construction, they're taking that into account as well?
Yeah, so we're like, Chi Pattery is about to 50% design phase, so there was actually coordination this month of making sure that, you know, utility connections and stormwater connections and things like that, so we're there was information with drawings being shared back and forth, so kind of a spirit of cooperation, definitely. And so, yeah, we would be looking to be under construction in 2021, and that would be from Zeller all the way to the entrance here at City Hall.
Great.
One thing I'd like to point out with that as well, so we're going to be adding a turn lane on Westwood Drive. So that should accommodate both fairway and Casey's.
Very good idea. Very good idea.
Yes, thank you. That was my largest concern. I live right there, and there's no way how it currently is, it could support Casey's of this size, so thank you.
Yeah, so there'll be a new turn lane, and then we have to redo the signals. But that's all part of the Ranshaw Phase Five project.
And is that Phase Five just supposed to be the year of 2021, or is it planned to take longer than?
It'll, it'll take longer. The bulk of it will be in 2021, but there will be some carryover items into 2022, very most likely.
And then just a general question about, is there any discussion or understanding what's going to happen with the old Casey's?
There is a discussion.
Yeah. We've got some preliminary discussions with it. But they're ongoing.
Good, good.
So these are two separate Casey's. These are not the, the older Casey's moving to this location. These are two separate companies. Or.
Same company. It's the same company, and they are, I understand considering the Westwood Drive site as a replacement for the 625 Zeller property, but that is not what's, you know, that, they're certainly not required to do that. But that's, that's my understanding is what, is what the intention is. But legally speaking, what we're talking about tonight is just this site plan.
So like I said, I live right there, so I just drove down to check it out again. And there were three residents from North Liberty Apartments, which would be the, the west facing apartment complex, or the apartment complex to the west of where this Casey's would be. And I just asked them, threw my mask on, and went and asked them if they would be, you know, what they would think about putting a Casey's there. All three of them were highly in favor of putting a Casey's there. I wanted to note that all three of them are people with disabilities. So they were even more in favor of it being right across the street, because they said it would be much easier for them to get to as opposed to even down the block, so. But I was glad to see that she was addressed to, because that could be very bright right there.
Well, and the one thing I'll point out too is, the new standard in the city for public sidewalks is five feet as opposed to four feet. So these sidewalks along here would be completely reconstructed with curb ramp along Westwood. And they would have a dedicated pedestrian access that's easily accessible into the building, so much more accommodating for everybody.
Brian, can you talk for a minute about the stormwater detention situation there? I know, I know you mentioned that they were going to just fit it in, in that kind of dollhouse rendering. Didn't, I had, I have a hard time conceptualizing what exactly is going to, what that's going to look like.
Well, I'll defer to Kevin for more detail on this, but there will be a stormwater detention area along the front here, kind of where this dash line is, and then there'll be another cabin, maybe a drive-on in the back.
No, yeah, it's just the one, the, I don't know if you want to circle that on one first. So it's going to be a depression. It'll be a dry detention basin. So you'll see, you know, this mainly be grass. Now, there won't be planting edges. And it meets ordinance, it'll provide water quality as well as a stormwater detention.
Okay. Yeah, that other rendering, it just didn't look like a, I didn't look like much of a depression there, and that's why I was curious about what exactly was going to go in there, but that makes more sense now, so. Thank you.
Excited to have that, because we didn't have any detention in that area before, so.
Absolutely. Well, and I assume that the the store, the new stormwater connections, you know, are, are going to, all that's going to coincide. I mean, it should make, should make for some pretty drastic improvement in that stretch, so. Thank you.
And Ryan, confirming again, the sidewalks, will that then connect, will we then have a continuous sidewalk? That five foot wide all the way up to the Zeller and everything then? Is that coming with the Ranshaw redevelopment?
Along Westwood, yeah, so we'll come up here and connect to the Ranshaw Way sidewalks.
Yeah, and that's actually going to be a 10-foot wide shared use path on the west side. And then on the east side will be a five-foot sidewalk.
Great.
There was a reference to a tunnel with this phase of Ranshaw Way. Is it in proximity to this site, or is it a different location?
A different location. It'll be further south. Yeah, near the golf course. Unfortunately, we couldn't get it in just because of the grades in this area. But it works pretty well down south.
Thank you for answering our questions. Are there any other questions or comments?
Is, is there any new thing that I'm just missing on here for outdoor seating or, or gathering space? I, I just as a comment, I see a number of Casey's being a, a location for people outrunning and cycling to stop and grab breakfast and, and, you know, enjoy the day. I didn't know if there was anything on the plan for anything like that. At this point, I don't believe that we've proposed anything at this location. We have found, you know, along certain bike trails, if something develops, we have found that, you know, our store managers will make requests to add a feature like that, which is not difficult to do. But for the most part, we're still maintaining some seating inside with those smaller tables and that new prototype that we have, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any last questions or comments? I know, Grant, this is not what we are legally looking at tonight, but I just wanted to ask the question. Do we know, does it, has Moxie Solar, have they announced plans to move anywhere? Or Liberty Motors? Do we know anything about that?
I can speak on.
Thank you, Ryan.
Solar. We actually just approved an agreement with them for a forgivable loan. They're moving, or have moved to 323 West Cherry Street, so kind of behind that, behind the concrete mixer plant right off of Cherry Street, and we're actually working with them on some potential future redevelopment plans that should be pretty exciting there, but that'll be a few years down the road, most likely. For Liberty Motors, I have not spoken to Ken there. I'm not sure what his plans are at this point.
Thanks, Ryan. That's where I get my car service, so I'll probably ask them. Where they're going. All right. Any final questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, may I have a motion for, for a recommendation to city council?
I'll go. I'll use the suggestion motion again. I'll move the planning commission accept the two listed conditions. And forward the site plan to city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the conditions recommended by city staff.
This is Pat. I'll second.
All right. Motion by Heisler, second by Staber. Roll call.
Pentecost.
Aye.
Eo.
Aye.
Ahorn.
Aye.
Staber.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Heisler.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Agenda number five. Yes, thank you, Mr. Pelz. Agenda item number five, a public hearing for an ordinance update. Staff presentation.
Okay. Well, the only way to get through this is just going to be go through the ordinance line by line. No, I'll spare you that. So, kind of as I've been here and just kind of, you know, reading the zoning ordinance from time to time, I just kind of make parking lot notes and of things we want, I want to amend. And so there was, I kind of broke them into four groups, and really this started, we had a variance application, somebody had almost an acre of land. And they wanted their current limitation for a detached garage is 850 square feet. Now, that's regardless if you have a quarter acre a lot or a 10-acre lot. And I, I found that unusual, and perhaps it's because they thought, well, everything's going to be eventually developed in the subdivisions, and that's, that's clearly not going to be the case. You're always going to have large lot properties in the city. It's not necessarily what we encourage, but there are existing lots, particularly along Jones Boulevard or you know, forever green that are just larger and probably unlikely to be subdivided. So we really started examining the accessory building, detached accessory building, and kind of came up with a criteria for which if your lot is a little larger, you get a little bit more space, and and just because you're going to have less of an impact with a larger lot. So with that, I took the opportunity to kind of go through and update some other things, and so I'll just kind of go through the four sections that I've identified. First section is, is our definition section. So we updated some definitions, and I'm really just making updates to kind of make things internally consistent. Changed a little bit how we measure the corner visual triangle. Prior version was at the property line, and it's, it's better to do that at sidewalk or its street edge. Because that's where your visual triangle is, so inserted new diagrams. Required yard versus yard. That'll be in the zoning code. Just overall effort, as you'll see, is kind of amendments come forward to you. Trying to make the zoning ordinance much more user-friendly and have diagrams just so people understand it a little bit better. Not everybody likes to read these extremely verbose statements about regulations. And here's a section about location. And here's a section about location of accessory buildings and uses. So provided that sliding scale and we did put a cap on it. And so I think that scale is appropriate. Cleaned up a bunch of things in zoning ordinance with respect to internal inconsistencies. Allowing greenhouses, we're now allowing ground mounted solar systems. We talked a little bit about how to prevent somebody from making their entire yard a solar system. So we would limit ground mounting solar systems to what you basically your required main building setbacks would be. And just kind of general reorganization, as I would call it. And we have this next section, which is one sixty-nine point oh eight. It was basically a written description of every encroachment that you could do into your rear yard. And it was all written, you know, went through front, side and rear. And we've just taken the opportunity to provide some updates to more contemporary things and put it more in a user user friendly chart. Here's an example of kind of what we did. And the last section was design standards. Removing the earth tone requirements from a couple of districts. I don't think it was ever intended to be in the ID district. And that's kind of a holding pattern zoning. RD is is our two-family district. It's pretty similar to single family. We don't require it earth tones in the RS. And the RFB, which is a residential manufactured housing district. The state does not allow us to enforce design regulations for RFB, so we're just going to remove it altogether. We better define what earth tone is. Spending the past several months here, I've kind of taken a look. I think that the the color and material palette is pretty evident to me. And you do have some, like a white used for an accent color, but you see a lot of grays, a lot of reds with the masonry. And so I just took the opportunity to define what that color is and prohibiting like neon and things like that, just to reinforce what what is basically been city building over many years. And I think it's been highly successful and made a very high quality corridors. And allow for, I'm never a big fan of using words like should in zoning ordinance because you might as well not even have it because it's not, I can't require you to do anything. So we inserted the word shall, and we're starting to see more black in roof color, but as long as the roof matches the overall design theme of the building, shouldn't be a shouldn't be an earth tone requirement. And so we 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 changed that as well. And so finding is just the zoning ordinance with revised updating and conflicting language. Include user friendly diagrams and tables. And so we do recommend that you accept the listed finding and forward the zoning ordinance to City Council with a recommendation for. I would say that we did have one letter. And this was from Art and Colleen Chipman. I think they were appreciative that we were willing to examine, and I wouldn't call this a letter of objection. I think this was kind of a suggestion. I think they're appreciative that we were willing to kind of look at the code and and make adjustments to it. They did offer perhaps being a little bit more liberal on the size. I would point out is, you know, seventeen fifties, a pretty spacious six-car garage. So I I expressed to Art and Colleen that I thought that was excessive, but that is in the record for you to review.
Thanks, Ryan. There is really no applicant, and you already talked about the public comments. I'm assuming there weren't any added after the fact. Questions and comments from the commission?
Ryan, how does it work if we're changing? The council approves changing the code and someone now becomes out of compliance? Are they grandfathered in, or what's the legal implication of that?
They're a legal non-conforming use. And they would be able to continue in in their existing mode until the use changes.
So that's similar to the garage we saw in the first one, right? That garage is non-conforming, but it can stay there as long as the use doesn't change?
Pretty close. That one, you can't be, you can't be become more non-conforming in that sense, but this is if you reconstruct and you'll you'll be able to continue to have the same size and setback and other building type of limitations as you already as you already have, unless you expand beyond a certain point. And then then you have to be become compliant or if your use changes. Ryan, do you have any other additional thoughts you want to?
The other thing I'd add is, you know, I tried to like an example of an internal consistency was in the accessory building and use section, we zoning code currently allows pools to be it's like four feet from the property line. But if you go to the encroachment section, which is now table format, it says pools, and if you have a deck associated with it, it's got to be ten feet. So we just did is knock it down to five feet for both of them. And so I think the direction we went was was not overly restrictive. So I don't think we're going to make very much non-conforming here. I think we're moving in a better direction to be, you know, minimal setback to your property line, but still respecting that you need some space to.
The other thing I wanted to mention is is that the 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 shall language for the color scheme has always is already there. And has been since, I think, two thousand and eight. Prior to two thousand and eight, we said you should have a earth tone base color scheme in everywhere except residential districts. And and this is further loosening that requirement to include zero lots and the and the interim development zones as and also manufactured housing, which is exempt anyway.
Any other questions or comments?
Ryan, on the table that you have with the different uses and, you know, whether it's in the front or the side, could you walk me through like where it says required front and required side, the yes and no mean permitted and you know, and not permitted or prohibited. So what do you mean by required?
Yep, let me go to a diagram that we're inserting into the code. So if you look at the top, the required yard is basically what the setback is in the zoning classification. So in this upper example, you have a twenty-five foot setback along the side street and the front street. But your house may be built a little bit further back than that. And so your required yard is what the setback, your property line to what the required setback in zoning classifications. Your yard area is any open land between your property line and your building. And so the two, the two may be the same, they may differ. But it's important to put that in there because what happens is these are encroachments into the required yards. You can actually encroach by a certain amount into that setback. They're usually pretty minimal. But, you know, for instance, a rear required rear yard setback for a house is normally like thirty thirty feet. Something like that's very large. And so these are exceptions to allow you to build like a deck or a patio or something like that into that required rear yard. Now, if you have a setback that's much further, and let's say, for instance, the code doesn't allow you to put an encroachment into that required rear yard, if you're setback further, then you can still build something, just not into the required yard, if that makes sense. I think we added a couple of things like we don't have in the code now, but a prior recreation. I see a lot of, you know, basketball hoops and yards and things like that. So that that kind of I call this modernizing the code and reflecting what contemporary uses and accessory uses are.
Just just going back to my, you know, I I'm just looking at patio. So a patio to you would be a a brick surface that would be somewhere in the front yard or or is there, you know, different uses that unattached to the house? I mean, I'm just thinking of, you know, homes that may have a small you know, brick landing in the front that they're throwing chairs and such to watch their kids play in in the driveway or the street or something is I didn't know if you had a different different thought on that.
So I don't have the entire table up here, but we have a couple of different a couple of different uses that I've got to look over here. So what you're referring to in the front, so we don't want decks and patios in the front. Those are typically a rear yard feature. But we do allow a stoop in the front yard, and that's just usually a small entry feature to kind of, you know, stairs to get up to your front door. Patios and decks, those would be a rear yard feature. And then if you were to structurally cover it, then you'd be able to be required to meet your house setback essentially.
And then I was going through some of the language up on garages and storage sheds on the on the minimum or the maximum heights. I mean, ten feet sounds like a lot for a storage height, storage shed height, but I mean, I jumped on Lowe's and Menards real quick, and there are a number of of storage sheds that fit within that two hundred square foot overall size, but are, you know, twelve fifteen feet high because of the because of the roof. Was where did you come up with that ten-foot height? And is that is that wall height or is that just complete overall height?
So the ten feet's in the code now, and so we just we just carry that forward. But but importantly, it's it's how the zoning ordinance defines how we measure building height. So building height, if you have a gable roof, is measured from from the grade to the midpoint of the peak in the U. So it's that midpoint distance. And so ten-foot height regulation, depending on the pitch of your roof, actually gets you something to the peak that may be in the order of twelve thirteen feet high.
All right, thank you.
And the maximum height for a garage is fifteen feet, so the same applies. You can actually get to the peak.
Perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you.
There any questions or comments?
Sorry, I have I have one more. I have I've noticed one more thing in this language. So there was a section in the prior code that discussed storage of inoperable vehicles. I see that that's redlined now, and basically it's just, you know, storage of a hundred square feet somewhere in the rear yard of wood, lumber and other materials. Or so are we specifically calling out that storage of other materials is now allowed? For example, in an inoperable vehicle?
Those are covered in our nuisance code.
Okay.
It's it's duplicative to have that in in the zoning ordinance and and it's enforced through the same measures as as we do nuisance. We did leave the the clean stacked wood piles per my request, actually. So because I'd wanted that to be people to be on notice so that we can prevent vermin rather than having clean up a nuisance after the fact. But rest of that stuff is typically handled through nuisance abatement and municipal infractions and such.
Thank you. I'm just when I was just reading through the code, I just, you know, there were a few things that just caught my eye that I just wanted to make sure that we were still going to be addressing somewhere else. So thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion for a recommendation to Council?
Yeah, so I I'll move that the Planning Commission accept the one listed condition and forward the zoning ordinance amendments to the City Council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second. Ahern?
All right, motion by Pentecost, second by Ahern. Roll call?
Ahern?
Hi.
Bathke?
Hi.
Kyo?
Hi.
Marx?
Hi.
Pentecost?
Hi.
Staber?
Hi.
Heisler?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to approval of previous minutes. May I have a motion to approve those?
I so move Bathke to approve the previous minutes.
I second. Marx?
Motion by Bathke, second by Marx. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any old business? No, any new business? I'm seeing head nod there, too. Okay, if there isn't anything else, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn. Ahern?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Ahern, second by Staber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. You will, everyone.
See you in October.